Play over and I do see something now that light flight was ordered for wish push. They've located one patient, the second patient not found.
Oh my gosh.
What's going on up there? I heard scanner traffic.
A possible drownings. They have found one patient and not located the other yet.
I'm sorry to hear that.
I can. Bob Davis.
Here.
Erica Libinow.
Here.
Matt Altman.
Here.
Carrie Clark.
Here.
John Ward.
Here.
Julie Peterson.
Here.
Dr. Martin.
Here.
Scott Olander.
I'm here.
Mandy Olson.
Here.
Harry Barr.
Here.
Rhonda Holden.
Here.
Vicki Michelle.
I'm here.
Amanda Scott.
Here.
Michelle Whirl.
I'm here.
Dr. O'Brien.
I'm here.
Jason Adler.
I'm here.
Lisa Potter.
I'm here.
And then if there's anyone else on the line.
I'm here.
Who was that? I'm sorry.
Hello?
Who was that?
I'm Hilda Coraggio.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Jennifer Crane.
Great. Is that it, Mandy?
I believe so.
Thank you. Welcome. Welcome, everybody. Good afternoon. Yeah, we'll call in the meeting to order of the Kidate County Public Hospital District Number One Board of Commissioners Regular Meeting. Our first action is the approval of the agenda. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
This is Carrie. I approve the agenda. Move to approve the agenda.
Erica, also.
Motion by Terry and second by Erica. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Consent agenda, which is the meeting minutes from June 25th, approval of checks and report from foundation and finance meeting minutes. Can we get a motion?
I'm moving to approve.
Thank you, John. Second it?
Yes, second.
Second by Matt. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No opposed? We don't really have any presentations. Do we have any public comments? No public comment? Okay, so. Yeah, just any comment? Hello?
I'm just trying to understand what's going on.
Okay, so this is the hospital board commissioners meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're going to move into reports and dashboards?
Okay.
So we have quality with Mandy Olson?
So my report in your packet.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for just a second? I'm not clear on whether there was someone seeking to have a moment to speak to the board or not. Did you want to make a comment to the board? And I'm not sure who you are. I apologize.
I am Hilda Coraggio and I have a grievance according to a garden that I have on your property next to Brookwood apartment.
So you do want an opportunity to address the board?
If I could, I have been notified that I have to take it completely out and I would like to know why.
Your name is Hilda?
Hilda Coraggio, yes.
Coraggio. Okay. So. So who notified you, Hilda, that you needed to do something?
Mitch McCarty, the maintenance, the engineer.
Okay, so you were told you had to take out your garden?
Yes, I was.
Okay, so.
That they had some kind of complaints against it and I have never heard any of the complaints. They were never brought up to my attention. And if there were any things that need to be done with the garden or anything like this, because it is on hospital property, and I did get permission to have this garden, verbal permission. I asked if I had to have written and they said no. So now I am being told that I have to clear it out, that it congested or something. And so now I am trying to figure out exactly, I'm trying to comply with the notice and I'm trying to figure out what is what I have to do and nobody is telling me.
Okay. Is that, is that something we can look into, Julie?
It sure is. And I am aware of the situation and I can tell by the looks on your faces, you're going, where's their garden on hospital property? It's actually at the back of the property on the other side of the water there.
Yeah.
And when you look at it, it looks like it's part of the apartments there. So I am aware of this situation and I can work with Mitch Carey to get some clarity, find out what's going on.
Okay, great. Does that help you, Hilda?
Yes, it does, but I need to know a timeframe because some of the things that are in the garden are hard to remove. There are plants already in the garden and I'm just trying to understand the whole situation. And it's kind of hard for me because this is a memorial garden for everybody involved, the hospital as well as Brookwood. I never tried to stop anybody or anything and so I am trying very hard to accommodate and it's been an ongoing thing and I just need to know exactly where I stand.
Okay, yes. So Hilda will, Julie will look into that and we can probably within the week, within a week, we'll have someone contact you. Do you, what's? How can we get ahold of you? Or do you want to contact Julie?
I think Mitch has her contact information.
Yes, she does.
Yeah, the only holdup will be, I'm not sure what Mitch's schedule is, but the next time he's here in-house, I'll connect with him.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Hilda.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay.
Bob, I would just like to share also Jen Crane is on the number on the call and Jen is one of the representatives from WSNA and she had asked for the Zoom link and we, she wanted to join the meeting. So typically we have other folks just call in, but Jen's special, so.
Hi, Jen.
Hi, Jen. Thank you. I actually, I actually did just call in because I didn't realize that was how I could get in.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Great. Okay, Mandy.
Hello, okay. So I have my report in the packet. The one thing I just wanted to add about the SARS-CoV-2 or COVID-19 response is just that throughout this entire time, we've been working from an employee health point of view and that includes Ryan R. in workplace health, Julie Hershey, myself, and Anna Scarlett. When you, this tracking that we've done the entire time related to employee exposures and exposure reviews, we have over 576 cases that we've looked at of individual employees, their exposure risk based on the documentation we see in the record. So we've been in communication with employees at least 576 times about their risk, what happened with a positive patient. So that's been a large bulk of the work we've been doing and as our positive numbers increase in the county, that means that work of reviewing the case, seeing when they may have had past visits before they, we knew they were positive and working with the health department has been, has increased. So, you know, when we get 13 positives in a day, that's quite a bit more than two, two reviews that we have to do. So I just wasn't sure how clear it was that that work was going on and I, I know that it's something we're proud of, that we've been able to keep up with even with numbers increasing, but that we have been able to review all these positives and check about the safety of our, of our employees. So that's one thing I just wanted to add about COVID response in our, from my reports. Other than that, I have the data there. I would like just to point out from the, if you look at the dashboard, let's see. So that's page 12 in your packet. And I can share my screen if that's easier. I know we've done that before. Would, do you want me to do that, Bob, or not?
Sure, yeah, that'd be fine.
Let me do that really fast because I think that will. There we go. Okay, so just really quick, a few comments just on this sepsis. We did have two failures of this bundle. One was a patient who has a chronic heart failure and you have to be very careful about how much fluid you're giving someone with that condition. And so they did not give them the prescribed amount of fluids because they were worried about fluid overload on their heart. So definitely a failure that we're okay with because it was in the best interest of the patient. The second one though was a, we did the right thing, a vasopressor was given, but the documentation of the response to that vasopressor needs to be documented by a physician and we didn't, by a provider, we didn't have that documentation. So we're working on that. I believe it was a resident in that case too, so someone we can work with on that, on that documentation. The other thing I just wanted to point out is the restraints really like the way that the direction this is going. So just one care plan was not initiated in all these 12 patients, so doing a lot better there. Also no needle sticks or hospital-acquired infections, so that's really good. And again, I, this is on our radar and we're working on it in the security team and do have in the future planned for, for more detailed data reports to I council and the board. I also just want to point out this little blip here. So we, we went down in April as far as employee reports. I think that had to do with workload more than, more than anything. People just were really busy with our COVID, COVID response, anxiety there. But then we popped back up again, right? We're reporting again, which is great. And what's also great though is that the harm didn't increase with reporting jumping back up. So, and looking really good here too with adverse medication events. I think that was all I really wanted to add and, or point out in particular.
Mandy?
Happy to take questions, yeah.
Yeah, the Medicare wellness visits, is that because of, because of staffing or is that because of reluctance to go into people's, you know, to visit people or?
That's absolutely related to COVID and people not coming in to have visits. And, you know, we had basically stopped non-essential visits, so they are going up even in June and July, though they're, they're continuing to go up, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Go ahead, Carrie. Reminder for the Medicare wellness visits, those are the ones that are in, done in the clinic. And so, yeah, those, those, as you can see, were greatly impacted by COVID. Really strong in February, huge dip in March and April and they, and to Mandy's point, they're, they're on their way back up and then we'll probably see them level off in July a little bit.
Okay.
Well, I guess I could mention one other thing too, just home health and hospice just really doing great here. Those are nice, nice numbers. But I'm happy to take more questions or? Hold my hand.
Looks good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mandy.
Yep.
CEO report. Julie?
Probably the best kind of CEO report, the muted kind. I just had a few things to add here. First, I want to brag on the foundation a little bit. They, if you'll recall, earlier in the year, they donated $25,000 for pappers. We ordered those back in March and it's taken until tomorrow hopefully for those pappers to arrive, so we know that they've been shipped. So we will have, Michelle's going to go down and take a bunch of pictures and, and we'll make sure to make a big splash about that in the newspaper, thanking them again for contributing to that. And since, as I point out in my CEO report, we are anticipating additional PPE shortages this fall. I think the timing of this is really, really good. The other thing, and Rhonda is working on this, and Dr. Martin, the, the foundation has a COVID-19 response fund for KVH that has a little over $13,000 in it. And we thought, again, in thanking the foundation, as we go through this current outbreak in the nursing homes with some of the seniors in our community, we're going to look at what the needs are there and celebrate it in the newspaper, talk about the contribution. So, so Rhonda's looking at equipment and supplies that we may need in order to help out with this. Dr. Martin's assisting with that. And when we identify it, we will ask for reimbursement from the foundation and put Michelle to work celebrating that in the newspaper, so. The other thing the foundation's been up to is despite the fact that they couldn't hold a gala or fund a need this year, they have raised, as of yesterday, I believe, $28,082. So they did that through online raffles and auctions and raised the paddle or fund a need. Oh, and they also had sponsors who contributed. So the fund a need this year was cardio stress testing equipment and $15,000 was raised and raised the paddle for cardio stress testing equipment. And again, all online, which I think is kind of amazing. The annual appeal for 2020, so far donations are at $30,510 for the foundation. A lot of good work going on. I wanted to mention that today we did the fifth electronic employee forum. The topics, we talked about the outbreak in the senior living facilities. We talked a little bit about infection control, mask testing and mask testing, so that was enough to confuse everybody. So it is posted now. If you didn't get a chance to watch it, you can go out and watch it. And it, as we have looked at this situation and looked at what the needs might be here in the hospital and out in the community, Rhonda and Kevin, I think Rhonda's already pulled the trigger on some temporary home health aides, RNs, LPNs, some temporary staff to augment particularly our hospice folks. So that should happen fairly quickly. We also have Vicki, I know, is looking for some CCU support for night shift and DeeDee's also out there looking for some nurses to help out in the emergency department. So we anticipate that this sort of level of anxiety, this is coming and going at the volumes, is going to be out there for a while. So the message from incident command is that we are not afraid to be overstaffed, so. Other than that, I did have some, as I mentioned in my report, I've asked Amanda Scott to talk a little bit about some adjustments that we're making to our policies. And I, I do just, I want to be clear, the reason that I am asking for action on this item and we're asking you to approve temporary adjustments to our policies and, and I believe we're asking for two months, the purpose of that is to be very, very clear that these adjustments to policies and pay practices are specific to this time when we're in this emergency and we're in this pandemic. So if we still need to maintain these adjustments at your September meeting, we'll come back and ask you to extend them again. But we want to be very clear that these adjustments are specific to this event. So, Amanda?
Yes, good evening. So in your board packet, starting on page 20, the beginning of my HR report, you'll see that we're requesting, as Julie mentioned, some flexibility in our use of administrative leave to support employees for very specific situations where we feel that they may be impacted and removed from work per our direction when they're not ill. So we have asked employees to use expanded benefits through the state. We've talked about that before in the, in the board meeting, when they are ill or have a family member ill for appropriate reasons. And we also know that there are some reasons that we need to ask an employee not to work due to exposure and activities at work. So you'll see what we're proposing is to be able to use administrative leave to help support employees on a very limited basis and for a limited duration when the employee is excluded by KVH leadership due to their activities at work. So this isn't, you know, if they, if they got exposed outside of work from that. The employee would not be ill because if they were ill, they would use the benefits that we provide for sick time and be able to use this expanded state benefits. And they do need to follow the proper guidelines that have been communicated and any, any expectations that have been set by their manager. So the, the specific example that we got that we've been working through and had a very collaborative meeting with the employee on, to share, was this employee had to be removed from the schedule due to changing guidelines with PPE usage. And so protective eyewear has been a really big topic and we've been communicating that now. But during this time back in May, when the employee wasn't removed from the schedule, the CDC had said that if appropriate eyewear wasn't given, wasn't being worn at the appropriate times, that the employee would be excluded from work. And so that's the, kind of an example of the situation. We believe that at this time, there's only about three employees impacted during that timeframe where we had that changing guidelines. But we also know things are changing rapidly, so as Julie said, we want to allow some flexibility for any changes that may come up that we don't have policies for already to support our employees. And then we also ask for the employees to be available to work as soon as possible. And the good news is we don't really see this being a continued issue moving forward, especially as we've clearly communicated the requirements and expectations to employees. But we also have biofire testing more available now, at least at this point in time. And so we believe that in an employee who has been excluded from work, we could get test results back much quicker and that would limit the time that they would be away from work. So we're asking for that temporary flexibility in our administrative leave policy to be able to pay employees for that time when we feel for specific, unique situations that they have been impacted beyond our normal policies and allow leadership to be able to evaluate those decisions.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
This might be a question for Julie.
Yeah.
Is there, could you explain why this is something the board needs to approve?
Well, again, I'm, we have contracts with most of the people who work in the organization. We have established policies. So historically, this employee would need to use their PTO or their, their EIB sick time, one of those banks that's accumulated for them. As Amanda pointed out, this is unique in that it's our requirement that they leave and they are not sick. So we were telling them, you have to go home, you're not going to be able to work your shifts and take PTO. And that didn't feel quite right. So particularly since we put people on administrative leave pending disciplinary action. So somebody who's working hard in the ED and has a exposure, is having to use their bank of PTO, someone waiting for disciplinary action gets put on administrative leave. That being said, I want to be very clear, when we're adjusting these policies, we are not establishing a new policy. We're not establishing a new pay practice. And that's why that's.
So the idea is that there are policies in place that the board approves eventually, and this is an exception, or a temporary change to those policies that the board approves, which is why the board needs to approve this exception. Is that the idea?
That is the idea.
I had a question.
All right, thank you.
I understand the whole eyewear thing. So that was a disciplinary reason why the person was sent home because they wouldn't wear their.
I'm sorry if I implied that. The, the situation was, and again, this is in the emergency department, and at the time, eyewear, we, there's literally like a 48-hour window that the CDC had released guidance specifically including safety goggles, eyewear into the PPE that should be worn under these certain conditions. And so we're rolling out that information, trying to get people educated on it, and that's when this near miss, and in fact, the employee ended up being negative, but that's when the near miss occurred.
Oh, so it was a near miss?
Yes.
He was exposed to somebody with COVID and he, he didn't have the eyewear on.
That's correct. Mandy, did I get all my facts straight?
Well, the, the, the protection, the equipment you're supposed to wear didn't change. Eyewear's always been a part of the PPE required when you have, or eye protection when you have COVID patient or someone you suspect with COVID. This patient was not suspected for COVID and what changed was originally the CDC allowed for people to come back to work with moderate exposure and they considered not having eye protection, only moderate exposure risk. They, what they changed was they got rid of that moderate category and they said if you're not having eyewear and the patient doesn't have a mask on, then now you're just high risk and you're excluded. So they, they kind of, they shifted their exclusion criteria to be, you know, kind of more drastic. And so that's what we were scrambling to do is those what ifs for our employees and trying to be proactive in anticipating where they might not recognize that a person has COVID. It might not be clear and helping to not have people restricted from work if at all possible. So the eye protection was always part of the recommended PPE. The weird case is you have people that don't come in looking like they're positive for COVID. And so that's where we've gone to this extended protect your eyes because we don't know when someone's going to come in that's positive.
So this policy change that we're voting on, is a disciplinary policy or is it kind of a combination of both?
It is not. It is in no way a disciplinary. All it does is allow administration to, it recognizes that administration may grant administrative leave as opposed to requiring an employee to take PTO or sick time.
So this, this policy just, just generates their reimbursement, their payment through a different process?
Correct. We keep them whole without making them use their accrued benefits.
And the intention is, is this to be two, three days at the most until
Correct.
results get back? Yeah.
And as Amanda pointed out, now that we have the biofire, we should know fairly quickly. And if there, I mean, again, every, every data point has a fork in the road here. If they're symptomatic, they're sick. Administrative leave is not appropriate, so.
I'm curious about the use of biofire, since I guess this is irrelevant, but it's speedy and if, if somebody is exposed to COVID, has a known exposure. how long do they need to wait? How, how long do they need to wait before being tested? Because it takes time for incubation, and do they need to be excluded during the incubation period? Or only after the, after symptoms would, after they're expected to be infected? How does that work?
But it depends. It depends on what their exposure was, what situation they're working in. Are they symptomatic or not? There's a lot of different scenarios, and we have to look at each one individually. So, but generally, our guidance from the public health officer is that testing is best at four to five days. So that, that's when we're really looking at. Any sooner than that, we, we're not, and we have had a case where someone was tested at two days and was negative, and then tested at five days and positive. So we're really shooting for five days is, is what we're looking at.
Is the thought that they would need to be excluded up until that, up until they're tested and until the results come back then?
Depends on the case. In some cases, yes, we've had, we had a case this week where the person was excluded from work until we could do the test later. But that had to do with how much exposure they had, how, how long it was, what type of exposure. That was not a work exposure though, also. So we worked with the health officer to decide that.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So this policy, it's approximately a 60-day placeholder. Will we see how it goes? Is that accurate?
Yes. Yeah, we, I think we said September board meeting. We'd like to reevaluate that based on trends.
And so this is for any employee who was asymptomatic, and either they were exposed and were waiting for test results, or they've got test results, but they're asymptomatic. This, so anybody who's asymptomatic, you know, they could, they're healthy enough to work except they're carrying a virus, this would apply to them? Or if they're asymptomatic, in other words, they have a virus, they would use personal PTO or sick leave or whatever we call it?
No, if they, if that test comes back positive, even though they're asymptomatic, there are state programs that step in at that point.
Okay, so this is... This is during the, the time where we don't have the test results. We have a reason to test them, but we don't have the test results, so we don't want them to work until we get the test results back, correct?
Yes. Yes.
And so hypothetically, if we were to test everyone who works at the hospital, and 10% of them, I, I mean, so, so if they came back positive, that's a different category. Where this doesn't cover people that come back asymptomatic but with the virus. This is only the unknown people we're testing because we have a reason to believe they should be tested.
And we believe they might have been exposed. So this isn't a random testing situation.
Yeah.
And...
Exposed at work, at work, at work.
Okay, thank you. And so this is just the 60 days, and, you know, maybe we'll learn a little bit more then. But it's possible this policy could have to go on a lot longer because again, we don't have an end date for this situation. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes. Yeah.
So the, the, I'm sure there's not a good answer to this, but is there any work that could be done at home for somebody who's asymptomatic, that's useful to the hospital, that falls within the purview of these various potential divisions that, you know, may have these employees who are still being paid, still able to work, except until they get the test back, we can't let them on hospital grounds? Just a brainstorming question here.
Yeah, I'm actually very glad you asked that. And for some physicians, absolutely, remote work, it could, could really help that situation. They wouldn't need to access this administrative leave. Of course, for our clinical staff that are caring for patients, remote work is a little more challenging because their, their work is patient care. However, in this particular situation with the employee, and what we're advising is we have requirements for training every year, required virtual training through BizLibre to maintain compliance. And one of our go-to answers is if employee, if employee's saying, "Help, I don't have work to do today, and I'm waiting for my test results." The very first thing they should do is make sure they're compliant with any other education requirements that don't require patient care. And that's a recommendation that we have to make sure we're compliant with education. So we've gotten all of those out early this year. Usually we haven't done that till the summer, but we got that out pre-COVID, actually right in March, right when everything was happening, so that employees who were either looking for work and their, and their shifts were impacted or were waiting during this time, they should absolutely do any of their requirements while they're, prior to taking administrative leave.
Thank you. So yeah, I appreciate all the answers. Thanks, Abol.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So if we could have a motion for the board request of authorization for temporary administrative leave use policy dated July 23rd, 2020?
I move.
A motion by Matt, second by Erica. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
A lot of little details to think about.
What's that?
A lot of details to think about.
Well, expect some additional adjustments to policy like this. So Amanda's also been working on supporting the staff, at least starting the discussion about childcare as the public schools kick up. Can, I'd like her to take just a couple of minutes to talk about what we're hearing from our employees in the survey.
Yeah, yeah, this is, this is definitely a stressor in our community and, and our employees included. So we actually did a survey with our staff. We had great response. We had about 70 responses for employees who are parents with us at KBH. And we, so we did get a lot of information. For example, 65% of our employees right now are unsure of their plans for childcare in the fall. So from a staffing perspective, that's something that we are really tracking. We want to be aware of, we want to anticipate. Of course, we need to balance our schedules with being able to maintain staffing ratios to care for our patients. But we want to be able to anticipate ahead of time what, what adjustments people will be requesting so that we can, we can really have conversations whether we can approve those adjustments or not. We also found that in conversations with the community, I was connected to the Kitteratt County Community Health Network, and there are community conversations right now about lack of access for childcare in Allenzburg in general. So even beyond COVID, this is, this is a concern for Allenzburg and something that they're starting to be community conversation about and possible grant opportunities. Of course, those are long-term fixes that we're staying connected to. But in the meantime, what we're going to be doing is pulling some of our employees together into kind of forum-style discussion groups. And we're going to help them kind of share the results, kind of help them think through what, what options or plans they may be able to come up with for, for scheduling for the year, trying to encourage them to communicate early on that and, and have conversations with their managers about any options that may be available, and also learn from each other, you know, be able to share resources. A lot of hospitals that we've talked about, that we've talked to have actually found success with employees coordinating with each other, maybe either changing shifts or, or getting, pooling their nanny resources together. And so we're going to try to just kind of facilitate some conversations, talk about some things that are in our control to help facilitate resources for employees to hopefully help plan ahead for the unknown in the fall with childcare.
Thank you, Amanda. That's the thing I have, so.
I just wanted to add to Amanda's remarks. This isn't something new. When the county undertook the Community Health Assessment, Community Health Improvement Plan back in 2017, the top three issues that were identified were care coordination, mental health, and childcare.
Yeah, big.
Julie, I have a question for you.
Okay.
In, in your report, you mentioned the merger between CHI and VM. How do you think that will affect our relationship with VMM? Do you see it changing at all, or should it remain fairly seamless?
Um, so from a clinical perspective, I did have a conversation with Carol Pete, who's the CEO over there at VM Memorial. And she called to talk about the merger a little bit, but also to let me know that they, the temperature down there in terms of volumes and COVID has gone down considerably. She wanted us to know that we could look to them for referrals and, and transfers the way we have historically. Because over the last couple of months, we've done more transfers to Wenatchee, found ourselves having to go west to the mountains. And we've talked before about what a strain that is on our EMS resources. So Carol called to let me know that. Regardless of who owns VM Memorial, I think the relationship between the E.D. docs, the hospitalists, all the clinicians, I think that's going to be what it is. I, I don't think we'll see any changes there. One of the, you know, in the acquisition or the merger between VM Memorial and VM Seattle, we did see keeping it in the system behavior. So we would ship to VM Memorial, and they would call a helicopter and fly them over to VM Seattle. So you could see sort of a business model coordination going on. I don't know that they ever really got that off the ground or that it worked very well. In terms of our ability to sit down at the table and say, hey, let's, let's talk about, you know, a, a business relationship here. Let's talk about what you can do to help support our specialty services. We weren't getting any traction with VM. We're certainly not going to get any traction as they go through this process of trying to merge. That is one of the reasons you'll hear from Dr. Martin that we've gone ahead and hired our own specialists, those that we've been working for two and three years to try to secure agreements with VM Memorial. We've just said, if we're going to have neurology here, if we're going to have vascular here, we're going to have to do it ourselves. So the one thing I am aware of, and this is Orthopedics Northwest, and I believe Yakima Heart, were both professional service agreements with VM. And in June, VM Memorial canceled those contracts. So they approached the physicians associated with those groups and said, "It's our model to employ physicians, not to do these professional service agreements." And so the, the agreements were canceled. That they had a, I believe it's the end of the year that they'll actually sever their relationship. But the physicians, I have been told, declined to be employed there. So Orthopedics Northwest is sort of a free agent out there. They are talking about putting a full-time orthopedic surgeon at the MAC, beginning at the beginning of the year, he would have, or sometime, he would have privileges here, be doing active cases here. So it wouldn't be that model where they did their consults at MAC and then went down to Yakima to do the actual procedures. So, so two key relationships at VM Memorial, I think, really got undone by this deal.
Thank you.
That all answer your question.
Yes, and I guess probably some of it, we'll just have to wait and see how it plays out, what they decide to do with their merger, so. Thank you.
Anything else, Mandy, on your report? On HR reports?
Oh, no, thank you very much, unless there's any questions.
So no, I just want to call on...
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Amanda, on page 21, the second box on turnover, you've got, you've got a column, year to date, you've got a column, 20 June. So I assume that means the month of June in 2020?
Yes. Yeah.
And is that a literal month, the first to the 30th? Or is it sequence for these board meetings? So then my question for year to date, is year to date through June 30th or through July? Or I guess that's when you submitted the report. I just want to understand what I'm reading here. Year to date is the first six months of the year?
The data, so, and we, and at the top, so for our July board meeting, the, the data is for June. So at the end of the month of June is when our HR assistant pulls all of our data. My summaries and updates, though, I do include different projects and things that are, that are happening and have been ongoing. But the data will be through June. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yeah, and I appreciate the report on the student volunteer services. Let us know, like, who, who's coming up, who's, you know, what areas that we have students and volunteers working in.
Good, good. Yeah, that's a, that's, there's a lot of transition in that area right now, but we're staying connected, and I'm excited for the future for that. And Karen is helping us transition in the meantime and wanted to express her, her gratitude and thoughts for her employment here, so.
Yeah, long-term, her and, and Marlo, both.
Yes, big losses.
Big losses.
Yeah.
So thanks for their service. So we have Dr. O'Brien's report. Dr. Martin, are you going to do that?
I, I'm here. I can, you can hear me.
Yes, Dr. Brian.
My satellite won't do streaming of videos. It's overloaded, so that's why I'm just here by phone. But you've all had the ability to review these records in Mandy's office, I know, several months worth. I went over them today briefly and phoned John Ward about some questions that he had. And I think we resolved all that. So in summary, I, I'm not going to summarize all the names and positions on the list because it's, it would take a half an hour. But you've had the chance to look at it, and Medical Executive Committee has closely examined all these applications and recommended these be approved by the board as requested.
Hi, Dr. O'Brien. This is Matt Altman. I, I think I probably have a couple of questions that maybe John's asked you in private. The timing of some of these, you know, since some of these were originally submitted in March, and we're seeing them now, you know, a couple of them have their state license, you know, expiring, state licenses expiring before now.
Okay, let me, I'll answer that question for you. And that is, if, if the state license expires, there's automatic immediate suspension or pausing or stopping your privileges. That's, that's a system solution. And yes.
Yeah.
They weren't, they weren't...
Sorry, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, they weren't all, in other words, based on those from a few months ago. We have not redone all that information on the application.
Right, yeah. And there were, I had one other question about, there are a couple, I think, a couple who have pending liability cases. And, but if they had that prior to coming here, I assume that doesn't affect us, right?
That's right. Yeah, yeah. As you know, liability claims by themselves do not lead us to recommending now.
Yeah, right. Yeah, I, I just, I, my question was mostly about pending cases.
Yeah, pending cases can go on for years.
Yeah, yeah, I noticed that, yeah.
And from an insurance standpoint, most malpractice insurance is on a claims made basis, which means that it is the insurance that you have in place on the date the claim is filed, not the date of service. That said, when you leave an employment, you typically wind up paying for what's called tail coverage, which is essentially any residual liability that you may have. The other way you can do it is when you join a new position, you can get head coverage that covers you for any claims for the work you've done up to the new hire date.
Okay. All right, that's good. Then I guess the last question, there was a note on one of the files, and, and this is just sort of a general comment, that if someone makes a handwritten note, maybe if they wouldn't mind, like putting their initials or something, there was this one place where a handwritten note said lawsuit without merit. I was just curious who was making that assessment. So maybe in the future, someone would mind.
Yeah, I bet that's a radiology one, and...
Yeah, it was. And that's fine.
And Kevin knows, Kevin, Kevin knows what you were talking about.
Okay. Anyway, just, yeah, I, I wasn't sure who wrote that, maybe just initials next to it.
I will, I will have a clear conversation with that practitioner.
That's good.
That, that head of that department.
All right. But that answers all my questions. Thanks a lot, Dr. O'Brien.
Yeah, thank you.
So we want to lump them all together. Is that okay with the, with the board?
I can move to the slate of credentials from March through July.
A second.
I have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And no opposed? Great. Thank you, Dr. O'Brien.
Thank you.
Dr. Martin, Chief Medical Officer.
Yes, so you have my report. It's interesting to look at the report and reflect that I submitted this last Wednesday and, which feels like a lifetime ago. So in addition to what's in the report, since then, we've interviewed one general surgeon that we're moving forward with, an orthopedic PA that we're not. We have another PA interview tomorrow. We are waiting to hear back from a pediatrician. We have signed a neurologist. We are very close to finalizing arrangements for vascular surgery with an anticipated start date in November. It's been interesting to think about the opportunities we've had in the last few months to really broaden the specialty services here. And I think we're, we're doing a good job of it. The general surgeon that we spoke to earlier this week has a strong interest in wound care and in breast surgery. So that would be a real addition to the skill set that we have in surgery right now. Lisa is moving apace. We had hoped to have a meeting on Project Windmill this week. That obviously got pushed back. Most of the week, most of the work that's gone on since this report was prepared has been around mobilizing the response to the outbreaks in long-term care. As you're probably aware, most of the memory care unit at Pacifica, if, well, probably all of it, is COVID-positive. All of the fatalities at that facility have been from that unit. All of them have come here for comfort care. We're working to augment the care team there and strengthen what they can do and essentially enroll the patients for whom it's appropriate in hospice so that we can help manage the symptoms there and protect, well, A, protect the patient from the trauma of transfer, which for a demented patient is far from trivial. But at the same time, protect our ability to care for critically ill patients and patients who expressed a desire for hospital care or they did become sick. We are caring for anybody who comes to us asking for care. A couple of us have heard rumors of people being told that KVH wasn't going to take patients with three legs or whatever, or that came from Lower Slovenia. That's not true. We're taking care of everybody that comes here. And there are patients that are coming here who have, in their advanced directives, said they don't want to be transferred to hospital. So what we're trying to do is, on the fly, is put together systems to better honor the patient's wishes. To that end, we have, Julie alluded to this in her report, Rhonda's team is bringing in some agency strength to beef up home health and hospice that we will have some additional staff starting tomorrow on a temporary basis. That's, that's the news from Lake Wobegon. I'll take any questions.
Kevin, can you recap the Board of Trustees meeting with CW that we were on today?
Sure. One of, one of the developments is the University Board of Trustees' meeting today and I believe tomorrow. Dr. Larson, Julie and I all participated in the meeting and addressed their plans. Dr. Larson is very, very pleased with the plan that they have in place, both in terms of reduced on-campus housing and revised traffic flows in buildings, trying to make traffic flow one way as much as possible, using the School of Public Health for contact tracking. The concern that we heard and we voiced was that when I was a freshman in college, I was stupid and I behaved stupidly. And all five of my kids, when they were freshmen in college, behaved stupidly. And we don't expect that college freshmen have miraculously gotten smarter because of COVID. There will be exposure up there in the dorms. I think what I shared was that I don't expect student exposures to significantly impact the hospital. I do expect that people exposed to students who've been exposed, staff, faculty, custodial personnel. There you're going to have exposures and patients who are more at risk on basis of age. And I expect that that could impact us. We answered their questions. I don't know that they have reached a decision. I, Dr. Godino, a little bit ago, sent us an email thanking us for the work that we're doing and for helping the trustees. I was out for part of, of the meeting, so Julie, am I missing anything?
No, I, we had an opportunity aside from that to meet with President Godino and, and hear about what their testing needs might be. And, you know, we assured them that from a testing perspective, we would be wherever they needed us to be. We would continue to have the COVID clinic, but they may have a time when public health wants us to come help with some testing up there or support student health services. And we just assured them that from that testing perspective, we make ourselves as available and keep as many options open as possible.
They do have a standalone rapid COVID test at the Student Health Center that they cannot obtain reagents for.
So their, their plan is to use our COVID clinic versus their clinic? Or are they going to run through their clinic first and then refer?
So they're not doing any mass testing at all? So, so they're not, when we spoke with them, they're not requiring that people show up with a negative. They're not going to test all students as they come through, none of those things. So what we would be responding to is, you know, somebody who becomes symptomatic, that contact, in case of contact investigation, identifies 40 students who are impacted, who now need to be tested. So it may be five, it may be 40, it may be 200. We will, that's why we said, you know, we're just going to end up wherever makes sense. So it, yes, we'll be in the Student Health Center. They're going to try to be as independent as they can. So if it's a small number of tests that they need to do, they'll do it, they'll do it at the Student Health Center. If not, they'll come down to the COVID clinic. And their Student Health Center is also open, as I understand, at limited hours, so.
And we also have been able to use our staff to support public health in testing at Twin City Foods. So we're, the idea of going to the patient is not a new one, if they-
We never know where Rhonda's going to be now, so.
I have some milk curtains with her picture on them for when she goes.
Dr. Martin, do we anticipate that they will get reagents anytime soon so they can run their testing there?
They are, as the state prioritizes distribution, higher education is tier four. So they are at the back of the line and will stay there. So they will get reagents when and only when everybody else has plenty.
So, and just as an aside, we have also heard that Kidditas County, Kidditas Valley Urgent Care is getting a point-of-care COVID capability, as is Whole Health Pharmacy. So we find that they may very well have a machine showing up. They may have a machine showing up in January. Where they may have a machine and no reagents or, so. Rhonda, do you have any insights into why, how they would be able to access point-of-care testing and an urgent care in a pharmacy?
I guess they'll sell it to whoever will buy it. But like you said, we can't get reagents. And that may be the same thing that we're facing. Whenever we are able to purchase our equipment and get it here, we may not get the reagents as well.
So we have the advantage of having a brilliant materials management leader. So she knows to ask things like, when will the equipment be here now that I've written the check? And will it come with reagents? So we'll see.
Where do we fall on the tiers?
They will sell to their current vendors first, and we were not one of their current vendors. So we would be sort of next on the list after their current vendors have their supplies of reagents.
But we, we rank above central, but conceivably below others, just in the general tier system?
Great. Any other comments, Dr. Martin?
Just the same thing any other leader on this call, on this meeting would say, which is the response of the organization leading up to last Friday and since has been little short of amazing. It's, it's been a lot of work, it's been hard work, and it's been very, very well done.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Any other questions by the board? No, so, yeah, appreciate, Dr. Martin. And, yeah, lots, lots of stuff going on. It's, it is pretty amazing. Operations, Vicky, Chief Nursing Officer? She with us?
She is, but I think she was surprised that you don't care about finance.
Oh, right, I'm saving the best for last because it's so shocking.
Do you want me, you want to go to Scott first?
Uh, yeah, maybe we should because it is, like, pretty shocking.
All right.
Sorry, Vicky.
No, no worries, I'm here.
Ms. Olender?
Thank you. I was, I've been looking forward to reporting about June for quite a while. As you saw from the, the finance report, we had a very, very good revenue month. So we had the highest gross revenue we have had in a long time. We had some, some unusual items that came in and helped us quite a bit. We had, we received $311,000 from Humana, which was the last of the money they owed us for underpayments for prior years. So we rec, we did not accrue for that, so we recognized that. We received a $118,000 transformation grant from the GCACH. We received $134,000 from the EOC to help us with some of the cost of the COVID clinic. We recognized one-eighth of the 4.6 million in CARES money that we received, and that amount was about $580,000. So the, all of the unusual items that we received totaled about $1.4 million. And if you throw those out, but there are, those are real things. We would have had, throwing those out, we would have had a net income of $284,000 just on operations. But those other things are things that we work on an ongoing basis. And when, when the money comes in, it's a very, very good, very, very good day. Other, other factors that contributed to a very good month where was employees and physicians and employees with wage and benefit concessions helped us with labor and benefit expenses. And then the vendors that the hospital has, they were helping us for a three-month period with, with reductions in fees for their services. We still have a few vendor fees that will fall, fall, or benefits, credits that will fall into the month of July, but there will be no other employee wage concessions that we have. So with all of those, those factors, we booked a, a net income from operations of $1.4 million. And that was a, an exceptionally good month. And I mentioned to Bob and John not to expect that every month. But in addition to what we were, let me, let me just back up. Are there questions about the monthly, the, the June financials?
I'm just, and, and maybe I was pleasantly shocked on the clinics. Like, I've never seen that before. So Carrie, whatever, whatever you're doing, Carrie.
Carrie, take a bow.
It's not me, it's, it's not, I can't take the bow for, frankly, it's, it's the patients just needing and craving that attention for, from their primary care physicians and the specialty clinics. They, they, they're, they're done, our community's done isolating. They're needing to be touched, they're needing to be examined. And, and our providers are, are open to do that as, and we're providing a safe environment for that, so.
Well, I do, I, I think one other department that was exceptionally good this last month was home health. They had, you know, they've had, patients haven't had, wanted their, the nurses and staff to come into the homes during the height of some of the COVID anxiety and concerns. And when they opened their homes up for care, they, Kathy and Rhonda and their team, they, they got in there, they had, they exceeded their visit budget by 33%. And that's, that's ramping up very, very quickly. So that, that really needs to be noted. There's, there's people who are working very, very hard across, throughout the organization. And clinics, surgeons, Vicky, the nursing staff, ER staff, surgery staff, throughout the organization, people are working extremely hard. And it's reflected in the good numbers that I'm able to report to you.
So I hate to be Debbie Downer here, but I do feel, you can mute me if, if you'd like. I still want to point out, that was one good month. Year-to-date, we are $8.3 million behind in terms of revenue. So we're seeing people, we're seeing catch-up here. And in terms of net income, we're $848,000 below budget. So it is a good month, July is looking good. But we haven't recovered yet from March, April and May, so.
That is accurate, that is very accurate. But in addition to the finances, just to push back with Julie a little bit, I'm, there, there was two other pieces of really quite good news that are not reflected in the, the financials and will not, will not be till the end of the year. Is one item came, we received a letter July 13th from the State of Washington. And it was, the state is forgiving $1.5 million of a liability that the hospital has for the rural health clinic reconciliation for the period from 2014 to 2017. So we have a liability on the books. And that liability per the state, per legislative adjustment, that liability is now zero. We will not recognize that change till the month of December because it'll be recognized later in the year. So that's one good piece of good, additional good news, just offset Debbie. And, and then the other, the other piece is, we were, Jason Adler worked on a re-scoping of our RHC clinic rates. And the rates for the Medical Arts Center Clinic, the Internal Medicine and Family Medicine of Clealum, for Medicaid, all went up effective March 4 of 2020. On an annual basis, that is going to be worth additional reimbursement of about $200,000 for us. So a, a good, a, a very good month for, for a CFO to talk to a board. I did send- some communication. We've, this is continuing the discussion that we have with regards to Kaiser. And I'm going to go to, I'm going to share a, share a screen. I've got, if I can do that.
Could I toss back to, to the numbers that you were quoting? I just had a, a question. I, I found it interesting that the utilities was way over budget from what we had. Was Julie running the air conditioning too much?
Um, they, we do get some fluctuations with some of the utility bills that come through. See, let me.
It was over, it was 120, the utilities were 120,000 and we budgeted 82.
Yep. I, I have to, Terry, I didn't specifically look and try to understand that variance. So I, I can follow up and let you know, but I, I don't have, and I can't give you a straight answer today, tonight.
Okay, that's no problem. When I was in Julie's office the other day, it wasn't too cold.
Okay.
People might refer to it as a cold day in hell when they have to.
Continuing the, the discussion we had, are there other, I'm sorry, are there other questions other than, other than Terry's? Okay. I've got, can you see on a screen? I'm sharing, I'm trying to share a screen. Is there a, I've got a draft letter on the screen. Are you all able to see that?
Nope. I'll, I'll go get Mandy Weed, see if she can bail us out.
Hey Scott, Scott, let me just make a suggestion of why the utilities might go up. And that is because of the changes, because of COVID, we made most of our rooms negative pressure rooms, which means we exhaust, exhaust the internal air to the outside. So that's replaced by internal air. And that's going to be a lot more expensive to do that.
Great catch, Dr. O'Brien.
We forgot that Dr. O'Brien's an engineer.
That's right. Yeah.
Okay. I don't know where my back ends. Well, if, if you're not, let me see if I can get back to Zoom then.
The, I mean, has the, the board has had a chance to look at those letters? Or the email and the letter?
Yes.
Here we are. Let me try share screen again. Okay.
And while he's searching for those letters, I also, this is Michelle, I also just want to stress, yeah, these are first round concept letters. And yeah, the Kaiser letter, I think we're pretty close to the patient notification. We need to work out some details and some timings that we'll talk about as we go on.
Yeah. What we, what I'm trying, I, I did, I did send some information at about 3:43 today, an email to all of the board members. Is it good? Can you see it now?
Yeah.
Okay. This, as Michelle said, this is a draft notice of termination to the Kaiser Foundation Health Plan. And this is some of, we've had, had some frustrations, more than frustrations in dealing with Kaiser. We, we think they're in breach in one of the actions they took earlier in the year with regards to re, re-leveling ER visits and running them through an Optum, Optum ER analyzer. We use the same, they, they use just the UBO4 form that, and with the procedure codes and the, the diagnosis codes that are on the UBO4 and are re-leveling what we have used, the complete medical records and a similar optimizer to make sure we code ER visits correctly. We objected to this and they have started to do this anyway. Kaiser has, it appears their business practice is to deny claims and force you to appeal the claims. We have an FTE that spends the bulk of their time appealing Kaiser denials. This is not the, this is not how other commercial insurance plans operate. So it's from our perspective, it appears to be a business practice and an unacceptable business practice. And then, and then Kaiser, we believe directs care out. Our goal is to serve patients in the community. And we believe that Kaiser directs care out of the community over to their clinics on the west side or in other locations. And so we have, this is, this is communication that has not been sent, but there has been written communication to Kaiser to object to some of the, the practices and the things that they're doing. And we, we believe that this is a step that the organization should take. As we've, we've, we're working on a communication plan to let local employers know that KBH will not be within the Kaiser network. We have reached out to the CWU HR department and let them know that this is likely coming. We will reach out to the Ellensburg School District, the Clealum School District, Kitata School District, Mattawa School District and local county and city in government employers that, and their HR departments and let them know that, that this change is coming. And to, that will help them, guide them in is, is choosing other plans through the PEP for their employees. We have, we will reach out to, to the local insurance brokers, to Virginia Gaiken Insurance. Lisa Potter and I had a meeting with them today to let them know of the change. And Mitchell Reed Schmittin Insurance, it also sells medical insurance. And the meeting with Virginia Gaiken, when I spoke with Kendra Allen, one of the, the brokers there, she had indicated some, some challenges and frustration and service deficiencies that have occurred over the year with Kaiser. Chris, Christie McCune did, you know, she's concerned just about the number. There's a, they write insurance for a fair number of, and small businesses that provide medical insurance. And she's concerned, she does have some concerns about the number of individuals that this would impact. But, but they appreciate the communication that we have. This is the goal in, in communicating this early is that in the, in this August, September time period is so that we can let individuals that would be infected, affected by this know prior to their open enrollment period so that they can, they can choose a plan that if they, if they, if they wanted to stay with Kaiser, they could choose Kaiser, but would have to understand that they would be traveling over to the west side to get care. And then the other thing, we are in the process of pulling a list of all the patients that we have cared for at our clinics and at the hospital that have the Kaiser insurance. And we would send letters advising these individuals of the change. So, so we think we have a, a, a good plan for communicating this change out to the employers and brokers and individuals covered by Kaiser. And question, Michelle, did I miss anything with regards to communication that you would like to let, let the board know about?
Yeah. The only thing that, like, we also want to be cognizant of what else is going on in the community. And so we want to make sure we get adequate notice out to everyone so that it's not caught by surprise. But we also don't want anything to feel like a piling on. So we're going to have everything ready to go, the resources ready to help. But we are going to pay attention to what's happening around us at the same time.
So I'd just like to point out, this is not a strategy to get them to the table. We intend to cancel this contract. We do not believe that these are good partners. So, you know, sometimes you use very strong language to affect change. We, we're not going to move the dial for Kaiser. So we fully expect that this is going, going to end in cancellation. The only thing I would add to what Scott had to say is that without KBH, I don't know if they can offer a product in Kitata County. They have to be able to demonstrate network adequacy to the insurance commissioner. My experience with the insurance commissioner is, is for rural adequate, it's not very adequate. So they may be able to offer the product without having an in-network hospital, without having in-network primary care. But, so we will see.
Yeah. I was going to ask Julie if there's something that she'd go to the insurance commissioner or to the state attorney general to look into this practice.
Well, Scott, you want to answer that one?
I've, I've reached out to the insurance, I have not specifically reached out to the insurance commissioner about Kaiser this time. But in prior experience with this, with the state insurance commissioner, they, they are, they don't offer a lot of support for hospitals and providers, and that's polite.
Scott, can you walk us through the timeframe as to when this letter would go out? In other words, will a final version come to the board? Or is this our last notice and you'll handle it in-house going forward?
I, I was, I was intending for this to, this, this may not be the final version, but essentially this is the, the concept of what will go out. And I would propose that we, sooner the better, if probably in, in August, early August.
I, I, I have a few little things I'd like to talk to you about, the way a couple of things are worded. They're very small and I don't want to waste time in this meeting with that, but.
Absolutely.
And then also like for an end date, I maybe would pick the first of a month, like September 1st, 2021 or something. As long as it's more than a year, I think you're within the contractual requirements to give them notice.
Yeah.
John, if you could include me on your thoughts, I want to make sure I get those captured when we do the final. This is Michelle.
Yeah, definitely. Thank you.
Yeah. I'd be happy, happy to work with you, John, on that. Are, good to go? Are you, are you all comfortable with this action?
This is Carrie. I think it's, you've got a, a good plan here. You, you're doing a plan as opposed to being reactive.
Yeah. And Scott, I appreciate all the rationale you put forward, very clear. And I think it's for the good of the community, even if they don't realize it yet. So I think it's a very positive step to make life easier for those who use Kaiser insurance.
And I think you guys are doing a good job with the communication. I mean, you're talking to everybody and especially with the letters directly to the patients. That seems above and beyond, and I think that's a really good, good move.
Yeah, I've talked to some. That this is really important to, to support our community. Like John said, they might not realize it, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Okay.
I've talked to a few members in our community about this at Kaiser Insurance, and they were very supportive of our concern because they actually had suffered some of the nonsense that Kaiser makes them run through with denial services and stuff like that. And this gives them an opportunity to move to another plan.
Okay. Very good. We will, we will proceed. We'll work with John on some edits and, and, and get it going. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Sorry, Scott. One, one last thing. There seems to be a question in the chat.
Oh, yes. I can someone help me? I don't know. Let's see. I'll stop sharing.
It just says.
The question is.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. The question is, is there a home health part of this as well? And Rhonda responded, that is in our operations report too.
Yes, it would be, it would be for the hospital, the clinics, home health and hospice. It's every, everything offered by Kitata, Kitata Valley Healthcare.
Thank you.
I, I do not have anything else.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Yeah. Thanks for the good news and thanks for the plans report and the work with the Kaiser letter. All right. So, um, yeah, Vicky, sorry for the false alarm before, but yeah. Operations report, Chief Nursing Officer.
Alrighty. Good evening. And I was just reviewing my notes from the board report. And it seems like that was, you know, months ago, but because so much has changed in the last couple of weeks. So you can read what's there and then have me, ask me any questions about those. What I would like to say however, is that in the last couple of weeks, things have really escalated in the patient care of clinical areas, only because of the impact of what's happening at the long-term care. Plus the fact that we've had several staff have, go out on medical leaves, both elective and unelective. So staffing seems to be a big priority for, for me and our departments and our, my managers. We are securing agency assistance in full-time positions in CCU, family birthing, the OR. And Didi is seeking additional help in ER. Because we anticipate that that we're going to be seeing more of an impact on the inpatient side when it comes to caring for these patients at the long-term care facilities. Other than that, the staff are holding up really well. We're constantly reviewing PPE and going over care options and being innovative with our staffing. Worked with the hospitalist group as far as, you know, where to, where to care for these patients best. So we're working closely with the medical team as well. So if there's any questions or any comments, I'll be happy to, to respond.
Hi, Vicky. This is Erica.
Uh huh.
And hi, I've got a question. You mentioned several positions that are needed in order to meet the demand on the clinical side. What is our, Ellensburg is, I mean, we all know that Ellensburg is small and I guess in the big scheme of things, we're kind of remote. What is our strategy for bringing in personnel from outside of the area? Is that our expectation is that people would need to come with, from outside of the valley to fill those positions in order to have enough people? Or, or what's our strategy?
I think it's both. We work with several agency, agency groups. A lot of our area is within Washington State, mostly in eastern, because we, we use a fair amount of PRDM staff through the agency. And they like to work for us. They like working at KBH. So we do have a select group that come back again and again. The long-term contracts that end up for eight or 12 weeks, these are mostly on night shifts because that's hard to, those are hard to fill shifts. Those may come from out of the area. We had one from the Midwest. These are nurses that are used to traveling and take assignments and like to visit throughout the country. So they may be from out of the area and a lot of them are.
Are we only seeking contract help or are we looking for permanent help as well?
Both. There are several positions posted and Jeff just filled one on night shift in CCU, which we're very pleased about, a 28-year nurse who worked ICU for years. So we're, we are, we are recruiting for open positions. However, it takes time to get them up to where they're able to work independently. So that's what we need to bridge the gaps and then to cover medical leaves. And maternity leaves as well.
Thank you, Vicky.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thanks, Vicky.
All right. Thank you.
Hi, Rhonda.
Hi, everyone. All right. So I guess to add to my report, I would talk a little bit about contingency planning with our new athletic trainer. We were just so excited to get Zane Davies finally hired. He actually graduated from CWU and he started on July 1st. So I think we've waited for this position for probably nine months. And now, of course, we're faced with maybe not having school in the fall. So what are we going to do with an athletic trainer? Zane has some ideas on how he could still continue to work with this. Zane has some ideas on how he could still continue to work with the students and the staff and maybe do some Zoom education with them about reconditioning or staying in shape, some education on mental health, which we know is really needed with our youth here since we have such a high suicide rate. He also brought up a suggestion of working with the Department of Natural Resources with our firefighters and our, you know, wildland firefighters. Because as you can imagine, that is such amazingly strenuous work. And working with them, if they happen to be out on a fire, he could provide services to them. So we're just really keeping our eye on what he can be doing. And his job may change a little bit from what we hired him for for this coming year. Any questions about that? No? Okay, I guess the other things that I would add would be really following up on what Julie and Dr. Martin have said about Pacifica in particular. I believe they have 11 memory care patients there now that are positive with COVID, and many of them are DNR status, do not intubate, do not transfer. And they are, of course, having staff who are positive as well, so a real staffing shortage. And we've been turning to perhaps utilizing our home health and hospice nurses to assist with that. We do have an option of the public health department maybe utilizing this as an alternative care facility. Or we could perhaps admit these patients into hospice and just put them on our service and then provide some continuous care nurses at Pacifica directly. And if we do that, one thing we've gotten ready is medication, the Comfort Pack medications, which would include morphine and anti-anxiety medications for them. We could also help provide oxygen if they needed it because, you know, the assisted living facility is just like your home. It's not a skilled nursing facility like Prestige. So we're working on that. We do have some nurses that this morning said that they would be willing voluntarily to work at Pacifica. Of course, we would still pay them their KVH wages. But we've also, I believe Manda reached out to WSNA to let them know that this might be a request of our nursing staff as well.
I just have to say that I'm just so proud of our organization, hearing how people step up in different ways, especially voluntarily. It's it's just incredible. Just wanted to add that.
They're a great team.
They're here.
And it's so, this situation is so fluid right now to have several different contingency plans in place to, you know, know we have to move in a different direction. So yeah, appreciate that work.
Thank you.
So can I just, and I may be the only one that didn't appreciate the difference here, but assisted living, in this memory care unit, you have a, it's a very thinly-staffed organization because as Rhonda pointed out, this is, these are people's homes. They live pretty much independently. So there's not, you know, nurses and CNAs all over the place. They're very, there's not a lot of staff there. And when they do have a patient whose medical status changes or who begins to decompensate, they pick up the phone and they dial 911. You have a patient who's do not resuscitate, do not intubate, do not transfer, and they go, oh, my gosh, 911. EMS shows up there, EMS tries to have this conversation, but this staff needs to move on to the next patient. And if we can get this arrangement with hospice in this facility, that's what hospice does, day in and day out. They understand, they manage these patients, and they know how important it is for these people to be in the right environment. That might be the hospital, but it also might not be the hospital. So I I think it's a brilliant strategy to get folks who do this every day there to help a really, really thin staff at Pacifica, so.
And and their staff wants to do well by their residents. They're restricted by, in what they can do, not just by their staffing model, but by administrative code. They cannot take care of sick people. So that's what drives their decision to call 911. If we can give them the ability to take care of the people that they've already bonded with, take care of them in their homes essentially, that they're grateful for our support.
So is there certain things that we're waiting on as far as from the Pacifica Corporation? Or it's just a matter of waiting till, what's the next step?
A meeting, there was a meeting at 4 o'clock this afternoon with Dr. Larson, Darren Nagishiyama, and Lena Bishop, who's the executive director at Pacifica. The the question is, do we declare that they are an alternate care facility? In which case, county EOC becomes responsible for all of the operations of that unit and essentially takes ownership of the patients. Do we simply say that we're delivering hospice in place? In which case, we're much more than limited in terms of what kind of material support EOC might be able to give. And the consensus we came to was, we're going to get these people, the people that are appropriate, onto hospice as quickly as possible, and we're going to figure out who owns what later.
The additional advantage we get if they they name that unit or Pacifica, the alternative care facility, is if we identify other patients that are in, do not resuscitate or comfort care essentially, we have a location to take them to. So they would accept all of those types of patients from throughout the county.
The the thing that Darren wanted to be sure of is that their management and their ownership, their local management is very much on board and very open to the idea of an alternate care facility. They want to make sure that corporate isn't going to push back on it. They, the incident management team does not want to commandeer the building. They want to accept the gift of the building, if you will. There is a sense of urgency. The folks that are in that unit are sick and they're old. And I expect that probably by early next week, we will have seen seen the virus go through that unit, run its course, and we'll know what the toll was. That's, the quicker that we can get this up, the more good we're going to accomplish.
And then is there anything the hospital needs to do as far as like, we're going to have hospital employees work there as far as liability insurance or the WSNA approval, I mean, is.
It's essentially the same. We already have hospice personnel that goes into that building.
Okay.
So that that's just part of the coverage for our home health hospice team.
Yeah. Okay.
So if they spin up an alternative care facility, what, they would then reach out to the state and reach out to our region and ask for resources to help staff and and make it function. That would, just like everyone else in the region, we would contribute what resources we could to that alternative care facility, whether it's, you know, dietary support or laundry support or, you know. And so we would be part of the region that's saying, here's what we can bring to the table. But to to the earlier point, that that's not our facility. It's no longer a Pacifica's facility. It becomes the county EOC's facility, so. And there are a lot of, you do away with a lot of regulatory hoops that you have to jump through, and there is some liability protection there as well.
Okay.
Julie, how long could that arrangement potentially last of being the alternative care facility?
I do not know the answer to that.
As long as everything else is going on, probably.
I think so.
As long as the county incident management team sees a benefit to it.
Great.
This is an example. Another site that they're talking about for an alternative care facility is Munson Hall. So that's the sort of location we're looking at. We just think it makes a lot more sense to declare the alternative care facility where the patients already are at this time.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and especially given that we are talking about a memory care unit, where moving patients out of that unit is, at the very least, taxing, if not frankly, traumatic. The, there's an entire literature around how much harm we do when we move demented patients, just in terms of the energy it takes them to process new surroundings.
Great. Anything else, Rhonda?
No, any questions?
No.
Nope. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Carrie.
Hello, everyone. My report starts on the bottom of page 42. And I don't have anything else to add. Again, like everyone else, I was kind of reading over it again, thinking, oh, that seems like a long time ago. We were creating COVID clinic workflows and making sure they were all standard across the board. And now we're creating more COVID clinic workflows than different ones. And just digesting as as we, you know, as we all are. So I'll take any questions.
Carrie, I just have to sing some praises today. I visited Women's Health, and I had not seen it since it had been complete. But it is tremendous. It was the smoothest experience, and I felt I I've been a nervous Nellie going out and about during this time. I felt completely safe going in there. I was in and out, lickety-split. I was able to check in from my car. They they have that down pat. It was phenomenal.
Fantastic. I'll pass that on to the team. And that's, that's exactly what that, one of the bullet points, the COVID clinic workflow. We are trying to get that standard across the way so that you have that same experience that you just experienced today at any of the clinics. So, good, thank you so much.
Well, just a general, what's the, what are the hours of the COVID clinic?
Nine to five.
Nine to five, okay.
There's a song about that. Now it'll be stuck in your head.
Seven days a week, though.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
I think the only day they've been closed since this started was the 4th of July. Is that right?
No, we remained open. It was, well, it was, yeah, yeah, we did.
Easter was our only day.
Hospital District 2 is getting ready to, they're advancing their ambulance garage. They're opening bids for the tree removal and getting ready to take that package out to bid. So keep an eye out.
Yeah. Anything else, Carrie?
Nope.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then Michelle, community relations.
Last but not least, right? And so I just want to update on my report. I will not be out of the office July 29th to August 9th. So you can still contact Jan if you want to, but I am available during that time. My team is really just working, Jan's trying to keep things running on the, what we quote, call quote-unquote standard work of our PSAs and top-of-mind ads, being, again, really having to be sensitive about what's going on in the community. And Catherine is completely inundated with trying to be creative with different departments and workflows and knowing that all of these events are canceled. And this obviously is not a short-term deal, so how can we still have that community outreach? How can we connect with our patients? Can we convert our diabetic classes to Zoom classes, things like that? So just lots going on in the background, working with department managers, community organizers on how can we still be active in the community, doing appropriate outreach at this time. So I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yeah, any questions for the board?
Thanks.
All right. So we don't really have any education or board reports. Any old business? Or new business? So we do have executive session.
I have a couple of new, new business things I just want to bring up real quick. First of all, with the daycare issue coming up potentially this fall with school, is there any reason to brainstorm or discuss KVH offering daycare internally as both a recruitment tool and a retention tool, knowing that logistically it's a somewhat of a nightmare? But, you know, do we have any empty facilities or empty buildings or anything? Is it, I'm just throwing it out there, is it something the board would even like to discuss, knowing that it may lead nowhere? But I I feel the pain of those parents who, once again, may at least have kids home three days a week and potentially with the change in the virus, five days a week come fall quarter. So just throwing it out there, see if any board members want to discuss that.
When I was running for this position, I had many people at KVH talk to me about, you know, the whole childcare issue. Julie mentioned that earlier, just talking about, you know, the childcare is a, it's a tough issue, you know, for almost anybody, you know. I, with all the stuff going on, it it would be an interesting project to do that. I do that, I I know that as a recruiting tool, we'd probably be one of the most amazing organizations in the state if we had some type of in-house childcare for our, for our staff. Julie, what do you think? You think we should be discussing this, or am I scaring you?
Um, so the first thing, in the context of COVID, we don't want to replicate what the public schools are trying to avoid. So, you know, opening up one of the houses we own and, you know, starting a daycare sort of thing is exactly sort of what we're trying to avoid here. The solution that that Manda spoke to, that we're working with through KCHN, and believe it or not, our workforce is really not large enough to sustain a true childcare center. You're talking about, you know, from infants through kindergarten or infants through after-school, whatever programs you're talking about. It's, so we are not of a size that makes a natural childcare. So our thought was to go to the community and find like-minded organizations. In a perfect world, KVH and and the city and the county and the school district and different large employers would come together to reach out to someone who does this, like Kinder Care, and say, what's it going to take to get you to come to our community and provide childcare services to fill this gap? And it may be that it takes some incentive, you know, some guaranteed slots from each one of the employers or some sort of incentive, but let the people who do childcare do childcare. And again, I I think it's, it is more feasible if you're talking about more than just KVH. And please keep in mind that our staff works 24/7. And it's really difficult to offer childcare services Monday through Friday from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM and leave your around-the-clock folks out of the equation, since those are some of the most difficult spots to find. Amanda, I'm in over my head. What would you add?
No, I think that's great. I would just add that, yes, we've definitely explored it. We've had a lot of conversation around it. The same regulatory and liability and infection control challenges that other childcare providers have, we would be facing. So there are some definite challenges with that. And even prior to COVID, our benefits and wellness committee, like Julie said, has been interested in partnering and trying to find a way to help support employees. And that's what we hope to be able to do.
Okay, thank you, everybody. I just, again, want to make sure it's being thought of from every possible angle because I know it's frustrating as a parent. Second thing I wanted to bring up, Julie, are, I'm correct in saying you, you've been working on the last four pay periods at a 20% reduction? Is that accurate?
Six pay periods.
Six pay periods. Did anybody else take an official pay cut on your staff?
So I used the same mechanisms. The answer, I don't know the answer to that, and I don't know that very deliberately because we made this a voluntary program. So I was the only one that came out and, and said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do this. Amanda and her folks have managed this so that people contributed what they could, the way they could. I use the mechanism that everyone, that most of the people did in that I, I did not pay myself full time. So for the past six pay periods, I paid myself 64 hours.
Amanda did other, well, I don't know if, are you allowed to tell me if other people did it that way to help out or?
They, they did. So, so the difference really here, we've always had low census in a, in our policies. It's really in the past been more driven by the directors based on patient care and volume productivity. Where how Julie mentioned the exempt employees, the, what the exempt employees did was they told us for this amount of pay period, I'm going to put in low census amount for reducing my pay 20%. Now, with exempt employees, whether they did end up working some of those hours and not get paid for it or not, you know, we won't always know that. I definitely know that managers have been accessible and on call. And so it wasn't necessarily hours worked base, but they, but absolutely the exempt folks, our leadership team got a lot of support from our, our leadership team and our managers that contributed to the program. So.
Okay, well, the reason I was bringing it up, just seeing that financially, we've come out stronger than I think some of us would have predicted. If you jump back two or three months, it feels like, you know, we're, we're not as, as bad as we feared we might be. I know the future is still very unknown. And in the months to come, we could still have a huge wave, and it could cause a lot of problems. I was just going to put out to the board, since Julie's contract is the one we have some recite over, if anybody wanted to discuss, if there's a reason to discuss returning some of those funds that were sacrificed. But I know if a lot of other people are also doing it, it may be way too complicated. So I, again, we can only talk about this as a group when we're all in this kind of public environment. And I hadn't mentioned anybody else, but I just, I didn't want her to sacrifice unnecessarily if we're financially strong, when we still may need something in the future. So I just wanted to bring it up for discussion. So I'll be quiet for a minute, see if anybody else has an opinion.
That, that makes sense, John. I, I think it's good that you raised the question. We don't want to just leave this in indefinitely, certainly. But this, I mean, this was done at the instigation of Julie herself. So I guess I'd put it to her to see what her opinion is on this.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, I appreciate the question. The fact of the matter is, I feel like that would be bad faith with our frontline employees who did pull all different kinds of levers to help us with this. Our physicians, the, the way that we worked it with our, our physician group is they voluntarily left behind their pension contributions for four pay periods. And that resulted, I believe, Scott, in $56,000 in savings. So I, I'm, I'm one of the team here. I did what I could do. I'm not convinced we're out of the woods. So, but I, I appreciate the question, but no, I'm a member of the team and I, I, my contribution was no more voluntary than everyone else. We were all in it together.
Okay, well, yeah, I, I appreciate all that. And I definitely appreciate everyone's sacrifice. It's one of the reasons at this moment we feel more stable than again, I would have guessed jumping back three months ago where we would be at. So I just wanted you to know that, you know, the sacrifice didn't go unnoticed. Again, we're very aware of yours. I'm not as aware of what everyone else did other than cumulative numbers. So again, thank you, everybody. And I, again, just wanted to bring it up for discussion.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. So at this time, we want to adjourn into executive session, but yet we're going to come back into open session. Are we going to be able to same, use the same link?
Yeah.
To come back into open session?
Mandy's going to correct me if I'm wrong, but we're going to leave this meeting open. So we're trying to emulate an in-person meeting here. So we're going to leave this meeting open. I need the board members to come into the phone call. The reason we're leaving this meeting open is there, there is requested action at the end. So come back into public to take that action. And everybody else can hang out here in this Zoom meeting and swap recipes or something while the, the board's in an executive phone call.
Great. So at this time, we will adjourn into executive session. Thanks, everybody. Appreciate.
You have a, you have a, you have a time estimate on when you come back?
Um, this is, we're going into executive session to talk about real estate. I would anticipate, does half an hour, 20 minutes sound good?
Sure.
20 minutes?
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Terry got lost in the internet.
She, she's texting him now.
There he is.
Yeah, I can see, I can see you guys fine.
Dr. O'Brien, what are you doing sticking around? You can't get any milk?
And there's no cookie.
I just enjoy watching power.
Well, let me know if you see any sometime.
Okay.
So we're, everyone's present, so there is no action to be taken at this time. Is there any further discussion? If not, we'll adjourn.
When's the next meeting? A board meeting?
The next board meeting is August 27.
And at this point, it'll be another Zoom meeting?
It will be a Zoom meeting and, and the governor just further restricted activities. So for the foreseeable future, I would count on September being a.
Okay, thank you.
There was no, no anticipated end date on his new actions?
Not that I saw.
But have we officially slid back to phase two?
No.
No.
They're just changing the rules.
Yeah.
I think we're in phase three asterisk.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think.
I think it's.
Sorry, go ahead.
Fifty went down to 10. Yeah.
But I thought I heard Dr. Larson say at one point that if we were to apply for phase three now, we wouldn't get there.
No, we would not. We're not meeting most of the metrics.
So even though we're in phase three, you know, technically, yeah.
Phase two.
Yep.
Well, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, have a good evening and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you everyone for your hard work. Appreciate it so much.
Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Yeah.
Okay, nice.